All right, we'll call to order this meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District Thursday, July twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. As a reminder to the committee and the audience that this meeting is being recorded. We'll do the roll call. David?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
June?
Here.
Lisa B?
Here.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Here.
Susan, I don't see Tom. I don't see, and I obviously am here. Our next scheduled meeting for the North Middlesex School Committee will be held at six P M. on Thursday, August seventeenth. First order of business is our consent agenda with approval of minutes from June twelfth. Counts payable warrants, payable warrants, a thousand dollar donation from the Nissat Tisit P T O and disposal of surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right, June, do you have a question?
I do have a question. The surplus property, the Ashby Elementary bleachers. We discussed it at the last Ashby Elementary Building Committee meeting, just wondering if that actually belongs to the town or belongs to the district, and I know Nancy was looking into it. I'm wondering if we have an answer on that and what is actually being done with the bleachers.
I can answer if it's okay.
Sure, please, Ms.
So we did reach out to the attorney. The attorney felt that it does fall under the school district. They are unboltenable from the walls, apparently. We haven't made a final decision on disposal. Mostly, we're just trying to get it on the agenda so that we could have the option. So I think we're certainly welcome some ideas as far as how we would want to dispose of these. It sounds like, you know, per the policy, we would try to sell them through a bid process. And if, and if it makes sense to do that, that that would probably be a good route to go, and then people would have opportunity to place a bid for them. Most likely, they're going to be salvaged in some way, like scrap, maybe separating the wood from the metal. So again, I think if a town, one of the towns, I believe Dave reached out to the town on them, and so we will. We'll check in with Dave as well before we move forward with any disposal.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, Nancy. Thank you, June. All right, so this is for the consent agenda, David.
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Next up, we have public communications. We do not have any submissions for public comment this evening. Chairperson's report. I just wanted to provide an update to the committee. So a couple of weeks ago, a few committee members and I attended a meeting with local officials from Ashby, Pepperell, Townsend, as well as State Representative Scarsdale, representatives from the Division of Local Mandates and the State Auditor Diana DeZoglio, I believe is how you say it. And it was, I think, the second of an audit tour, as the state auditor is calling it, of going around the state and meeting with local officials and districts. And this one was really focused on under and unfunded state mandates and some of the budget constraints that that districts are facing. We had a good discussion around regional transportation and some of the concerns there where, again, one of the incentives for districts to regionalize years ago was hundred percent reimbursement of bus transportation for students. So a lot of, a lot of discussions, this is anticipated to be the first of many. On the town side, there was, again, I think, some concerns or, I guess, needs raised to have these budget discussions get underway sooner than later, just anticipating some of the shortfalls coming up into this fiscal year, especially in Pepperell, where, and I think in Ashby, where both towns used considerable amounts of free cash to cover operational budgets. That that's going to prove to be an issue for the next budget cycle. So again, hopefully, the first of many. I think Representative Scarsdale has been very supportive in reconvening the Regional School Caucus and helping to bring the auditor in the Division of Local Mandates to the district to have these conversations. So more to come, but just wanted to provide that update. So maybe any questions or comments from anybody who was there? All right. Then I will turn over Superintendent Morgan for his report.
Thank you. I did just want to add on to that, too. I did reach out to the town managers about potentially meeting on August twenty-fourth, so hopefully that date will work. I've only heard back from one at this point in time, but again, I'm hopeful that that will work so that we can get the budget discussions underway early. And I have been in contact with Niss Scarsdale as well, just around some potential follow-up meetings. Unfortunately, that meeting did happen during the Summer Institute for Superintendents, so I'm not sure if any superintendents were able to go. But I was not able to attend that, so hopefully we'll be able to have a follow-up meeting around these topics because it's something that we definitely will need to discuss with the budgets coming up in the near future. The only other thing that I had to discuss, and I can certainly bring it up now, it would be part of the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan, is that I did put together an advisory with two representatives from each of our sending communities, and we've had two meetings up to this point. And I know I've discussed this with school committee as well. There's definitely been an uptick in bullying in districts across the Commonwealth as a result likely of COVID. So what we are trying to do is trying to educate parents and trying to find better ways to educate our students around what bullying is and how bullying can be reported and how it can be prevented. So something that we are going to do this year, which is something we have not done previously, is we're going to cover have a brief presentation at all of our open houses in the fall. That tends to be a well-attended event for parents, so that parents are able to hear from the building administration with regard to what bullying is, what it isn't. How can bullying be prevented? You know, the simple things to do just by trying to monitor social media a little bit, having discussions with kids at home, but also how can they go and report bullying to the school? On top of that, we are going to be bringing in a speaker for grades five through twelve. Katie Greer, she actually came in during my first year, and she discusses social media issues and cyberbullying with students. Usually, it's it's very well received by students, so she'll be doing presentations for Hawthorne Brook, Nissatis at the high school, and also a community presentation on the on September eleventh. So we're able to secure that. Looking forward to that. Again, I've had her speak numerous times, and it is well received, and it's great information for students and parents to hear. So hopefully, that will be a well-attended event. I just wanted to put that out there, where we'll be discussing the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan later on this evening. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions for Superintendent?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Moving on to new business, we have the, first up, North Middlesex Regional School District Handbooks.
Sure, so I do have principles here from each level. I do want to point out just a couple of changes this year. The Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan, which is going to be up for discussion following the handbooks. That is something that legal counsel has reviewed. It's something that we do have to send into D E S I on a cycle basis, and it has been fully reviewed by legal counsel. Unlike in past years, we are actually going to put the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan into the handbooks, so it's easily found for parents. We'll also keep the section on the website as well, but we'll have it in the handbooks as well. The only other piece with the handbooks before the principles get started is is that there is an addendum with important school district policies and some of the more important laws for parents to be aware of. I did not include that in tonight's discussion, so that will be, that will be, that will become a part of the August School Committee meeting, once we have that section vetted. But again, it's what all that really is is school committee policies, and this was something that was done five years ago. It happened during my first year with some policies with, things were pulled out of the handbook rather than having them be a part of the handbook. And I do think it's important. I've had some discussions with school committee members where the school committee should be involved in determining what the most important policies are for parents to see, but also be involved and be apprised of any legal changes that are going on on an annual basis. So that'll be something that will be coming to the committee separate from the handbooks, but it will be, it will remain the addendum, if that makes sense.
Makes sense.
So I think we can start with the high school, Mr. McMahon.
Yep, no problem, Brett. Do you want to just take questions on it? Is there anything you should bring up in particular, or just changes? What would you like to start with?
So yeah, I think it's best, they were included in the packet, so if school committee members have questions regarding any of the recommended changes, the changes, for the most part, were legal changes. There were some, some minor changes that were made by the building administration as well, just to make sure that we were current and we're accurate with regard to practice. So I think it probably makes sense, as we've done in the past, to just field questions if anyone has them.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions on the handbook? For the high school?
I'm not sure if the chair has any recommendations on a better way to do this, but the handbooks are pretty lengthy.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see what questions people have, and if they get too involved, we can take it and move this to a subsequent meeting for approval if there's too many changes. But Randy, you have a question?
Yes, actually, a procedural, or not procedural, but a quick thing is Susan Robin says she's on her phone. I don't see her, but I could be missing her. I don't know if she's as a panelist or not. If not, she's on her phone because she's having equipment problems trying to get online on her computer. So Robin.
I didn't see her, but.
I don't see her either.
I don't see any attendee section either.
Yeah.
Okay, let me let her know that.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay. Oh, I think she was in the wrong session. She's trying again. Okay, as far as the handbook. Just a couple of small things. I'd like to see just a slight clarification on the athletics for the ice hockey ice time. It's not a hundred percent clear that it's an additional amount of money for the ice time for varsity and for J V above the two forty-five per sport.
Okay, sure.
It was just, it was just small. The way it read, it almost looked like, you know, there was alternate amounts, not additive.
That's fair, okay.
And the second question I had is, I was looking through the book, and I didn't catch this earlier, but on my, my last review this evening, going through these, is the mission and vision statement is not in the handbook.
So the plan is to bring those to the committee in August as well. I have that on my board in my office to bring that in, so those will also, those will just be added to the front of the handbook right after the table.
Because the middle school and the elementary school have the mission statement as far as what is going to be brought for change. And the S D C has the old mission and vision, but the high school doesn't even have a section for the mission and vision.
Okay, I did miss that. Those should not be included in those handbooks because I wanted the school committee to approve those.
Okay, just wanted to ask about that. And then a general, a general comment for all of the handbooks is, we have some policies in these handbooks that are mentioned at the very end, even just some small ones, but none of them have the letters or the numbering system for the policies. If a parent is going to be looking here and see, you know, policy on, you know, our agenda. They don't, and they go to the policy book, they're not going to be able to match them up, so if we can just put in those policy, you know, the name and then the policy number.
Not a problem.
Anybody else have questions on the high school handbook? All right. Seeing none, then I will take a motion to approve the high school student handbook as amended through our discussion.
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry, who seconded? Was that June?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, any last questions, comments on the high school handbook? All right, David?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Principal McMahon.
Next up, we have Principal Olmstead and Principal Young from the middle school. Again, just taking questions from the committee if there are any.
All right, seeing no questions.
Can y'all hear me? It's Susan.
Oh. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and I was putting my thumbs up on the video, but I guess you guys can't see my video. Since it wasn't called, you didn't know I was here?
Oh, yeah, I didn't. Sorry, I didn't know you had a run.
It's okay.
Welcome. All right.
I've been here the whole time. You just couldn't hear me. I heard Randy ask about putting the numbering, lettering system on the policies.
Okay.
Just giving proof I was here.
All right, so we'll put you down as a yes on the high school handbook. Any, any questions on the middle school handbook? From anybody? If not, then I will take a motion to approve the middle school handbook as presented.
Craig, just want to say it's not as presented. It's with the, those other changes with the vision and mission statement and putting the policy numbers on.
Okay, so same feedback as the high school?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Second. Susan?
I think June might have beat you on that again. All right, David?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous as well. Thank you, everybody.
And then for the elementary principals, we have Principal Cromwell Gapon to take questions from the committee on any recommendations for change there.
Any questions? Some more feedback, I assume, Randy, on the mission, vision, policy?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, then I will take a motion to approve the elementary school handbook as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Right. David?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, and then we just have these, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know the there's other, the Squanica Handbook and
Yes.
So I don't think we can do those through those.
So the Squanica Handbook, we have Mr. Brooks here to take any questions regarding that, some very minor changes there.
Thank you, Superintendent Morgan. Good evening, everyone. The only changes that we made to the Squanica Handbook is just changes that were required of us by the Department of Public Health. And so Catherine Hampson, who's our supervisor of nursing services, added some changes to the language as far as what we require as far as immunizations and such for students coming into the program. And those are on pages eighteen and nineteen.
Any questions, June?
Yes, I did notice that the school committee information is out of date, and will need to be updated on that.
That was updated. I think that there was an error in the I think there was, there was an error in the initial link that was shared out, but that has been updated with the, with the appropriate members in the school committee for this year.
Okay, and my other comment is, it's not a big deal, but I really like how the changes to the handbook were highlighted in all the other handbooks, so it was very easy to see the changes. Where this was kind of a separate sheet that we had to kind of cross-reference and go back and forth. So just a little feedback for the future. It's easier on our end to see the changes highlighted.
Okay, that's good feedback. Thank you.
Thanks.
Right, any other questions?
That's all, that's all we have, I think.
All right, then I'll take a motion to approve the integrated preschool program handbook as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous, and I think that is, that is it. All right, thank you, everybody, for that. Moving on to the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, Superintendent Morgan.
Yes, just quickly, this is something that we have to, on a cycle basis, submit to D E S E. Our plan, much like other plans across the Commonwealth, is aligned to the model plan that was sent out by D E S E several years ago, once the requirement was put into place that all school districts have a Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. And this is something that, quite honestly, we send off to legal. We send it off to legal annually, just to make sure that the plan is still up to date with regard to the law. And that's what we have received back for feedback from Attorney Lee Mello, who works out of Tom Nuttall's office, just with updates to our current B I P, and making sure that, again, it is in line. The only thing that would need to be changed after this would be the dates on the front. And then we would have to meld any recommendations from legal counsel into the handbook before we submitted to D E S E. I think, too, just to add, this is something, you know, we have to do more than just have a plan, which is why we're starting to implement some other things as well, just to make sure that we're doing everything we can with regard to our, with regard to our standards-based curriculum. We use the MARK program, day twelve, and making sure that we're educating not just students, but teachers and parents and community members as well. It isn't something the school committee, it's not something right now the school committee has to approve, but once it becomes part of the handbook, it is something that likely the school committee is going to have to approve moving forward, once it's in the handbook.
June, did you have a question?
I, I do, I don't actually about the Bullying Prevention Plan, but I do appreciate that we're trying to get this out to families more and use, you know, different avenues to reach families with that, so I'm glad to hear that. I actually raised my hand only because I wanted to know if we needed to approve the Extended Day Handbook because we moved on without approving that, and it was in the packet.
No, sorry, did I miss something?
June, you beat me to it.
Nice catch.
Thank you.
We, we have Ann Cromwell Gap, who runs the Extended School Year Program on for any questions with regard to that. Sorry about that.
Glad you're opening it. The only things that have been changed are staffing patterns and then pricing, which our monthly prices have increased anywhere from five dollars to twenty-five dollars for the month, depending on how many days a parent purchases.
Right, June, do you have a question?
Yes, nothing about the content. I'm final of all of that. I was just curious why the formatting is so different for that one and if it should have some of the same information that, that we include in all the other handbooks. As far as like the, the I don't know, all the, the initial, like, district information at the beginning. Such as, like, the mission and vision statement and stuff like that.
It's something that we can certainly add. I mean, it is, it is an optional program that families have to opt into if it's something that they're interested in, so we can certainly add that if the committee would like us to do that.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious if it should be the same, so it's all streamlined. I don't feel very strongly one way or another, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but I did just kind of notice that, so.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Ann? I know we modeled this off after some other districts.
Yes, we did. But if you'd like changes, I don't have an issue with changing that up.
Any objections to that from anybody?
But, sorry, one more time. My only thought is just where we've had such a focus on the branding for the district that, and trying to, you know, make sure schools are doing things the same way, where this might kind of fall into that, to just kind of streamline it and keep it consistent.
We can certainly go through it and make some adjustments, for sure.
Okay. Lisa B, your hand up?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with June, too, there. I think it'll be just more uniform with the other handbooks as well.
Yep, excellent. Thank you, Lisa. Randy?
Um, just to kind of, I guess, you know, counter, and I'm not, I'm not wedded to it, but just the idea that it's an extended day program and something more, you know, something different than the regular school day and other, all the students go to it. I can see it being a little bit different to differentiate it from the standard school day, but I do like the idea of having everything standardized, so I'm kind of torn on that.
We can at least add the introductory things with the, with the school committee members. Appropriate administration, mission, vision, things of that nature. We can add that, and again, that's not, certainly not, not a big deal. And hopefully, that will, that will address some of the concerns.
Do we have an expectation that all the district policies also apply to the program?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
All right, any other questions or comments on the Extended Day Handbook? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the Extended Day Program Handbook as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Randy, did you still have something, or?
No, no, sorry.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
I will vote yes, so that is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, now back to the bullying prevention.
I did just want to thank the principals too for attending this evening. I'm not sure if there's anything else on the agenda that I'm seeing that would require their attendance. So they're certainly welcome to stay or they're welcome to go about their evening business as well. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the the time.
And just getting back to the bullying prevention intervention plan. So again, it has been vetted by legal counsel. The recommendations are there. That would be implemented and then obviously the date would be changed and we would submit it to DESE and then we would add it to the handbook. So it would not be separate. It would be a part of each handbook and we would also keep the separate section on the website. So it would be visible in a couple of different spots. For parents and community members and students for that matter, so. That's essentially where you're at. If there is any substantial discussion or recommendations to this, we would likely have to bring it back to legal counsel. Just to make sure that we're in line with what. With what we need to do and make sure that the district and students and staff are, you know. Protected by the plan.
Bro, this is this is just last year's plan without. Updates that need to be sent to Desi's. I just want to make sure I heard that correctly.
So so this is the red line version. The updates should be in there.
There was only one. There's only one red line.
Yeah. Yeah, there was.
Nine, oh fifteen.
It wasn't much.
All right.
So it's very it's very minor.
Somebody's, yeah.
And sometimes sometimes there are there are significant changes, other times there are not. This year, they happen to not be significant changes, but I did at least want to give the committee the opportunity to lay to lay eyes on it before we format it. Update the year and then send it into DESE and then make it a part of the handbooks.
Yeah, and if folks haven't strongly, I mean, recommend the committee read read through this. And I know bullying has been continues to be a topic of concern of community members. But I also think that word gets misused. And again, if you read the definition that's that's on the screen. Can kind of make sure we're all speaking the same language and and focused on issues that need to be addressed. And getting people to the right contacts when when issues do arise and following that through the administration, so. Strong urge folks to read through this. All right, any questions on this before we move on? Okay, so we'll wait any. I'm assuming there won't be much feedback if we have that minor change and we'll just await that to incorporate this in the handbook and vote on that.
Yes, and this was also put on put on the website for public comment as well. We did not receive. Anything with regard to public comment on this either. So I think we're good then.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have the MCAS update, Dr. Burberes.
Good evening, everyone. Craig, if it's okay, I'm going to share my screen.
Yeah, please. I'm trying to figure out how to stop sharing.
Oh, it says that you've disabled screen sharing. Are you able to?
You should be able to.
It should be good now. Okay. Are you seeing the MCAS PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great. So good evening. I just wanted to give a quick update regarding changes that are happening with the MCAS. We were notified earlier in June about some of the updates and that are going to impact the upcoming school year. So just overall updates, Desi is working right now to procure a new assessment contract that will be going into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Right now, we had the the contract is with Pearson, so they may continue with Pearson or there may be another vendor at that time. But they're not expecting any major changes as a result of that procurement to the the actual assessment. They are looking to make some improvements to the current testing, both in terms of the format of it as well as the depth. That the students are able to demonstrate their learning and understanding. And as I said, there are there are some changes that will impact us going into this year. So the chart on this page just shows kind of what is what the current testing structure is. And under science, technology, I didn't include, but we have the ninth, ninth and tenth grade testing. That students take as an end of unit or end of course test for chemistry or biology or physics. Or and that's to meet the competency determination. But what what's new for going into this school year is the field testing of an innovative assessment for science and technology, which I'll talk about. On a subsequent slide, but we're going to start to see some of those types of questions on that in the grade five and grade eight test for this coming school year. Also new this year will be field testing for a grade eight civics exam. And the next slide talks about what what that will look like. So they've been working, we we had in the past few years, there's been the shift to the civics action project for grade eight. And our high school students and the state wanted to come up with an assessment to be able to for students to demonstrate demonstrate the understanding beyond just completion of a civics action project. So what they've come up with is a test that's kind of a two-part test. The first is a state level school scored performance task. So students will be presented with some problem or scenario and they'll have to incorporate not just individual work on it, but group work. To be able to discuss problems, analyze, critique. And really demonstrate some of those higher level skills that we don't necessarily see on our paper pencil or computer based MCAS test. And then the second part of the test is an end of course test, and that will be more of a traditional MCAS like computer based test. Their goals and one and I've highlighted this, that third bullet is really about measuring deeper learning. That's been an area of focus for Desi over the past few years, really, rather than trying to look at the breadth of what we're teaching, really getting deeper into learning and understanding. And so they're trying to develop assessments that better better match that goal. So while they've been field testing it with some some students across the state, this year, all of our eighth grade students will be exposed to this field test this upcoming school year. And then for science, we our fifth and eighth grade students have been taking the science MCAS for a number of years now. And again, that has been more traditionally looking at just content knowledge as opposed to applying skills to your learning and understanding. So with the state's focus of really deeper learning, they've developed new question structures that are real, real world scenarios. They include simulations where students have to apply their skills and knowledge. They need to conduct investigations, make observations and analyze data. So again, they're trying to get away from this. I'm going to ask a question that just has a factual response, a right or wrong response. And really look at how are students applying the skills that they're developing within their classes? And how can we better measure that on an assessment? So for this upcoming school year, we'll still see the science and technology exam. But embedded in that will be some field tested questions using this new format. With the goal being in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the shift over to the full innovative science assessment. So I just wanted to share that with the committee, just because you may hear people asking questions out in the community. Any questions?
No questions from anybody? All right. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that.
Not a problem. So I'm going to shift to the strategic plan now?
Please, yeah, that'd be good.
Sure, so. I'm not going to go through the entire document. In your school committee packets, you have a larger document which identifies the act different action steps. That have been taken within under each of the strategic objectives for our plan. As you know, this was a plan that was developed back in two thousand nineteen. It was a five year plan. So we're moving next year into our final phase of this current strategic plan. Which means during the course of this school year, we'll be spending some time involving the community, involving school committee members, parents, teachers, students. To help frame the district improvement plan going forward for the next five years. While I can't say for certain with certainty what will be on there, I do anticipate that we'll start to see some goals around portrait of a learner. Or what some are calling portrait of a graduate, which really identify what are those core skills? That really cross domains academically, but also cross life skills that students need to have to be sex to be successful beyond high school. And we have, we're going to start some work this year at the high school level of identifying those core skills and identifying how can we embed those within our practices across the content areas. With the goal in subsequent years, looking at, okay, so if this is what we want them to be doing at high school, what does that look for like for a middle school student? And how can those students demonstrate, develop, practice those skills? What does it look like at the elementary level? How can students demonstrate, practice those skills there? So that it really becomes a a clear and consistent through line from elementary up through high school. But that being said, with with this year's strategic plan, this was the document, this is what's posted on the website. We have three, what I call buckets, our strategic objectives. The first is around curriculum instruction, second, meeting the needs of all students, and the third, climate, culture and community. I'm just going to highlight from each of those areas, some of the things that we've accomplished this year, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. So under curriculum instruction, that some of the big areas of focus have been about developing systems to better assess and measure student progress. So we've had developed common assessments. We've come and introduced some new online assessments that students are taking IXL and iReady. Which allow teachers the opportunity to get some real time data to not only assess students, but use that assessment data to drive their instruction. And identify interventions that students may need. We've also been working very hard over the past couple of years in the curriculum department with the implementation of both the expeditionary learning, English language arts curriculum. As well as the illustrative math, I am math programs. And one of the things we focused on this year was really taking a look at those programs and making sure that, which leads into our second strategic bucket. That all students are are being exposed to rigorous, high quality instructional materials and curriculum. And that we're providing the scaffolding and supports to make sure that every student is able to achieve success. So as we go into that second bullet, that meeting all the need, meeting the needs of all students. Some of the things we've really been focusing on this year have been around mental health for students, particularly up at the high school level. Looking at students that might have experienced a more significant trauma that they had to be out of school for. And how do we transition students back safely, successfully, make sure they're feeling supported and that there are structures in place for them to. Make us a safe return to the school. We've also been looking at ways to provide leadership opportunities for students. So within your packet, you'll see a number of areas where students have had leadership opportunities from the elementary level all the way up through the high school. We've looked at SEL competencies. So this year we had a grant to be able to measure students perceptions around their social emotional learning competencies. Based on the CASL framework, which is a framework that is pretty recognized. Within Massachusetts as well as nationwide as identifying kind of five core competencies around social emotional learning. We've used that data to. Weak what we're providing in terms of curriculum and instruction around SEL. But also looking at what types of professional development opportunities we need to provide to staff. So that they can not just be teaching an SEL class or subject such as through the MARK program for the anti bullying or second steps. But really embedding those practices and competencies within their curriculum for all content areas. The other things under that second strategic objective involve looking at the trainings and parent workshops. So this year we were able to offer three parent workshops. One was around the Common App and Naviance for our students at the high school to support their transition to college or life after high school. There was also a parent workshop on teen mental health, particularly in an post COVID environment. And how do we kind of return return to normalcy for students and what does that look like? And then the third workshop was around creating a safe and welcoming atmosphere and environment for our for all students. And then the other pieces that under that bullet of meeting the needs of all students is really the concept of equity. And how do we ensure when we're talking about equity, how do we make sure that all students have an equal opportunity to access? The services, the programs, academic learning, and what do we need to do to make sure that we're providing supports for students? Because the supports might look different based on where students are coming from and what their needs are. So this year we provided training for our elementary and middle school staff around equity. We also completed a curriculum equity audit on our humanities curriculum K to twelve. The goal of that this year was really to work with an outside consultant to learn the practice of how to do an equity audit. So that as we're going forward and this this upcoming year, when we're looking at our high school curricular programs, we can incorporate the strategies and approaches. Of looking through an equity lens as we're completing those that curriculum work. We also received the genocide grant, which has allowed us to look at how we're introducing concepts and of genocide instruction. At the high school level as as mandated by state law. We have. Laid an equity survey that community members and parents were invited to participate in at the beginning of the year. We only had twenty-four responses, so I'm hoping to do that again as we go into the fall to be able to use that twenty-four responses maybe as somewhat of a baseline. And then look at where are we one year later. And then we're also looking at discipline data. It's to make sure that there's nothing within our school, our policies, our practices. That are promoting differences for different different students. Because some of our subgroup populations are so small, it's hard to just look at the numbers of the data. So we're really having to spend some time to dig into that to make sure that. We're we're doing things that are supportive for all of our student population. And then the final bucket for this current strategic plan is around climate, culture and community. Really, a lot of that focus has been around how do we brand ourselves? How do we create a social media presence to promote the positive things that are happening in the schools? So I think what we've seen is that there's been an increase in the number of posts and the number of posts that really promote the good things that are happening in the schools. We started the year, staff started with a better together door decorating contest, really just to get everyone on board that, you know, with the concept that we're better, we're better when we work together. And that was really well received. We had some staff and and school committee members, parents working on the vision, mission and core values committee to really identify. How do we want, how do we, how do we want to highlight ourselves and where do we want our students to go and be? To as they move forward in either their learning or careers. We had a celebration of learning at the end of the school year where we had teachers K to twelve highlighting student work. And an opportunity for teachers to walk through and see the work of students across all content areas. And really start to identify what do they notice in terms of what's happening? If a high school teacher is looking at a kindergarten lesson or activity or student work, what do they notice? And how does that build on what we're doing at as we move up to the high school? So this, the document that was shared in the school committee packet, which highlights all of the different action steps that have been taken this year. Is something that, you know, I certainly have to give credit to the entire leadership team for developing what we, the way we had structured it or the way it's been structured as I came in this year. Was different team members on the leadership team were identified as the leads for the different priorities that were that are listed in our strategic initiatives. So they're responsible for ensuring that we were moving forward to monitor the progress and to be able to identify and track and share out. and share out where we are. And that's a true, that's the strategic plan.
Thank you. I appreciate how you've kind of laid it out both here and in the the kind of the updates on the on the full document. So thank you. A lot of good, a lot of good progress being made and kind of appreciate that update. Any questions from the committee, Randy?
I just have a quick question on the assessments being used, the IXL diagnostic and the
I Ready?
I Ready, yeah. Is have you been able to do any kind of assessment on how effective they are? I know I have my kids in in college now, and a couple of them have these online assessments as well. And they're not very flexible, especially with anything in the math area and trying to create a, you know, and write out an actual formula online. They're not very accommodating for small errors in 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 the syntax like that. I also know when my kids were in the high school, especially over the years of COVID, trying to use those is they didn't feel that they really were testing a lot of their knowledge. So I'm just wondering what kind of assessment we have in place for that.
So the the companies themselves have done a lot of studies around correlations between what they're measuring in terms of months of progress or years of progress, and how that matches up with other assessment areas and with teacher feedback. And there's some pretty high validity with those. I I do agree that those types of assessments don't necessarily give the opportunity for open-ended responses for the higher level thinking that we're certainly asking our kids to be able to do. So they're not good assessments for that, but they are good snapshots. And when the teachers are using them effectively and going into this year, we're providing a lot more professional development around the progress monitoring piece. The goal of them is really to be using them as an opportunity to, okay, we we give them this assessment now, or they do this task within that. How are the students performing? Using that to drive whether some students might need additional intervention or support on a specific topic, and being able to provide it at the time as opposed to end of unit, end of quarter, end of year assessments. But I do agree that the not, you know, while they are dynamic in terms of as students respond correct or incorrect, not every student is getting exactly the same questions. It might shift based on the the type, the way they're responding. They're not flexible in terms of the open-endedness.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, for the one member of the public who's joining this live and anyone who happens to view it later, I think this is an important document that folks review so they understand kind of the direction that the district is headed, some of the important initiatives that we're focused on, and also eliminates some of the noise that that you may be hearing out in the community. This is the this is the facts, as they say. This is the stuff that that, again, the district is focused on for improvement, progress, changes in certain areas. So encourage folks to take a look at that. And again, Gary, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else on that, we'll move on to the FC 653 Investigating History Implementation Grant.
So this will be a quick one. We applied for the Investigating History Implementation Grant. As you may recall, this past year, our seventh grade students and teachers were exposed to the curriculum at that level. This grant is allowing us to implement units in our fifth and sixth grade classes with students. They are a lot, the curriculum aligns with the state frameworks. It really promotes higher level thinking and problem solving that we want students to be engaging in and thinking about as they're exploring the world and their understanding around it. The grant that we received is in the amount of $63,378. A bulk of the funding will be to pay the vendor that will be providing the training to our staff. Our staff will be participating in training throughout the year in small groups and also after school, sometimes in virtual groups, so both live and both in person and virtually. And then other parts of the this grant will fund stipends for the teachers that are participating in the out of school time, as well as a small amount of money for some materials.
Any questions from the committee on this? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion to of the school committee, accept the FC 653 Investigating History Implementation Grant as presented. That's in the amount of $63,378.
Second?
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa B?
I kind of do have one question, just because I'm sorry, I was trying to click the raise my hand. Where do, where do we see the entire curriculum that's being taught to the students?
So I can get that information to you. I believe the DSE also has information about investigating history on the website, but I'm happy to share a link with you.
Okay, I mean, I'd rather see the entire curriculum before going ahead and agreeing on on this just as a school committee member.
Well, you're welcome to also look at the curriculum frameworks under the DSE website because that this obviously is directly aligned with the frameworks that have have been in place.
Okay.
But I'm happy to share that link.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
So Lisa, are you a yes or no on accepting the grant?
Um, yes.
Oh, Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan? Susan, are you still there? Can't see the participants list. All right, we'll take that as an extension, and then I will vote yes. So that's
Craig, Susan had her thumbs up on her camera.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you, Susan. All right, so that is unanimous then. Thank you for that. Moving on to the Van Poel Transportation Updates. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you. This is brief as well. So I I think several of you on the committee have been, you know, kept in the loop with many frustrated parents, especially this spring, May and June in particular, with a whole host of issues with Van Poel due to driver shortages, canceled routes last minute, parents having to drive their students into school and the district needing to reimburse them. When we did that, we we took that off the invoices and and had Van Poel actually pay for reimbursing the parents for driving their students to school. So Superintendent Morgan and I met with them right at the right before the end of the school year, just to address several of these issues with their Vice President of Operations and their Director of Client Relations. And one of the things that came out of this meeting, you know, was was a whole handful of things that they're putting in place to try to rectify these issues. And we suggested and they agreed to having some in-person meetings with parents. And so we're doing that on August 17th. I sent it out to the I sent it out to all of our special education parents earlier this week. It'll be in person at 9:00 AM at the high school. And then we're doing a Zoom virtual meeting at 2:00 PM on the same day. And so that'll be a question and answer session for parents to come directly to these these administration from Van Poel, ask questions about what what happened, why did it happen, and what have you put in place to rectify it? So we're working very closely with Van Poel. I I I feel confident that that they've put in, and Superintendent Morgan and I have met with them. Nancy Haines and I have met with them. And so I just wanted the committee to be aware, and I'm more than happy to share those dates with you all as well if you if you're able to attend.
Rod, do they, do they share any, at high level, I don't, not looking for specific incident explanations, but do they share any high level information as to what happened or what maybe?
So one of the biggest issues they're having, as as are we as a district, as are many companies, is is hiring. And and then once you hire, it's retaining employees. And so they've done job fairs. We've actually shared information without, you know, with our with our community. You may have seen some of the links that have gone out with job fairs. They've stepped up their training. They've stepped up when they have drivers filling in for other drivers who are out sick. Because if a driver calls out sick, you know, the morning of a route, and they have another driver have to fill in for that route, you know, that's where some of the mix-ups happen. And so these are some of the issues that they that they're working hard to address and that they're going to talk directly to our families about as well.
Any other questions, comments from the committee? All right, I guess, yeah, we'll look if you could send out the dates and times for that.
Yeah, so so I shared it with, I I send out a Welcome Back to the School Year information letter at the end of every July. And then I'm also, I'll also send out a reminder probably that at the end of that second week of August, just to let families know. So I'll share that with you all as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, under New Business, School Committee Development Goals. This is I guess a partial continuation of what we talked about in our last meeting. I know a couple of committee members had some thoughts and ideas on potential opportunities for school committee development. So I'd like to talk through that with folks if anybody has ideas we want to talk through now, but probably be best to have at least maybe two committee members work to maybe propose an activity for the the school committee from a development perspective. And then we can use that to funnel into some goals for the upcoming academic year for the committee itself. Unless the entire committee thinks we're doing a perfect job and we have nothing we need to improve upon. Randy?
Yeah, I I would like to certainly get together when I was talking about before with trying to figure out having a workshop on the school committee goals and setting something up with the administration to start learning a little bit more to be able to collaborate more with the Central Office on some of the goals, the superintendent goals, school committee goals, and working together.
Excellent. Thank you, Randy. Lisa B?
Hi, I actually sent, I believe, you Craig and Brad an email in regards to the follow-up on the goal setting. And I talked to Dorothy Presser from the NISCR field director, and she said that she would be willing to come out and do a workshop with our school committee. An hour or two workshop on an evening that we chose. She's off for about a month right now, and we'll be back in the office like the end of eight August. And then that would help us put the goals into place that we want to put into place. And then she could do a follow-up with the whole school committee too, if we agree upon it. She said either you Craig or Brad or myself could just call her to schedule the workshop for her to come out.
Excellent. Yep, no, I saw that. Now I figure we could, we should talk about that here. I think we have had her come out in the past. Actually, it's been a number of years.
Yeah, she said it was a couple of years ago. But that would go over the whole learning lunch that she had done with the Chair School Committee of Sudbury on as well. And she could help us just kind of start the process like Randy wants to with all the policies and so forth like that and put it in place.
Yeah, I I think that would be a good idea to kind of level set. Again, we haven't had her out in a number of years.
Yeah, so she said just for us to kind of maybe agree on an evening or something that we all can make it to. And then one of us can get back to her and try to schedule it.
I know leading up to the new year is generally a tough time just with vacations and and getting ready for the school year. So but maybe shortly thereafter might might work for folks. I don't know. Lisa, if you and I don't know, Randy, do you, the two of you want to work together on maybe what that workshop would entail and 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 propose a time for that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I think that'll be a good development opportunity for us and then dovetail that into setting some goals and I think as as the school year starts, the superintendent will be setting his goals. I think it'll all kind of come together nicely.
Like the first half into September, but not, I mean, away from obviously Labor Day weekend. Maybe first half to bed to some, I mean, September is the month I'm trying to say.
Yep. Yeah, if there's an agreeable date in there, I think that might that might make sense. And if, again, we're, if we're meeting monthly, then there could be a couple of Thursdays in there if that still works for folks. All right, any comments from anybody else in terms of what they'd want to see? As we look at development opportunities? Or goals or both? The only thing for me is I think I've said this every year in the committee, but it's just continuing the communication improvements and community engagement and finding ways within the realm of of what our scope is to to make sure that we're communicating the work that we're doing to the community. I know over the years, people have tried to engage folks and get them here. Lisa, I saw a number of posts from you on Facebook to encourage people to come to this meeting, and we had one person out of over 3,000 students show up. So less than disappointing when we got critiqued on what we're doing, but people aren't involved in the process. So I think we've got to find some ways to whether it's just communicate out, but but get some feedback from people. So they and educate so they understand what it is we actually are accountable for. But that would be
How do we look at the 21st of September? Who won a Thursday is what I understand?
Yeah, I don't know when our September meeting is, but that that works for me.
Yes.
Throw a date to start?
I just have to cross-reference it with open houses.
Yeah, that's true too.
I would reach out to see what Dorothy Presser's schedule looks like, see what she has for availability.
Yeah, hello, Lisa and Randy? Work that and propose something back.
Yeah, she's on vacation for a couple of weeks, so one of us, either Randy or I can
I maybe offer her the 14th or the 21st?
The 14th or the 21st? Okay, one other thing too. I had read an article on the Worcester Superintendent, and it was a great article. It was in the Worcester Telegram Gazette. And she has launched the, like, was just speaking about all the things she's done through the past. I think she's been there two years. Launched the Family and Community Engagement Roundtable. And they said it's to hear from students, caregivers, and the community members to help guide the district planning. So I thought that was really interesting. I did put a call into them. Of course, through the summer, so I guess it's a department they have within the school because it's a huge district. I mean, it's a huge school. So, and they gave me a name, Casey Starry, to have him followed up with the the call. But I just thought it would be interesting. But I just thought it would be interesting, I don't know if you, Brad, know the Worcester Superintendent at all, where you could maybe reach out and ask her?
I knew the previous one, I don't know the new one, but I'm happy to reach out.
Her name is Rachel Monares, I believe it is. But the article on her and the things that she's done within the her district, seemed pretty amazing what I've read, so, but this this Family and Community Engagement Roundtable seemed pretty interesting, and maybe that would be one way that we can get the community more involved with our district as well. Among the parents and students together.
Okay, happy to look into it and give her a call, and try to learn a little bit about the program that she's running.
Okay, that would be great.
Rod, do you still have regular attendance at your superintendent coffees that you do?
No, I generally have one or two people. And they tend to be the same one or two people each month.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, no, a lot of a lot of good ideas, I think definitely something worth pursuing, just that's, I'll continue to say it, Facebook is not the source of what goes on here, so we will endeavor to find other ways to communicate with folks.
The School Improvement Council, I think they're called, they also have an opportunity for community members to join, are we fully? Do we have community members on every School Improvement Council, do you know, Brad?
I believe that we have them on most, I believe that there was one school that was struggling to find a community member, but again, a lot of schools count parents as community members. I mean, technically, there should be a community member on it as well, but that's not always easy to find. But all the schools do have school councils made up of staff, parent and or community members.
Spalding had the Townsend Librarian as a community member, which I thought was great.
And and I'm not sure who comprises of each one, but each school does have a school council.
Just thinking that was an opportunity to get, if there were community members looking to get involved. That was an opportunity if they could reach out to a school in the district and volunteer their time.
I can check in with the principals and see what the status is of of the teams.
Okay. So I think it's great to have a community member that volunteers to participate, rather than the school tracking them down.
Agreed.
Because that way you can get different voices involved, different perspectives.
Okay.
And I kind of liked, I thought it was a nice idea that the Townsend Librarian was in, so it'd be great if there were people from the towns as far as employees that was able to participate, kind of an exchange of you know, that we work together, you know, who are sharing budgets, and we work together just to get a better understanding of each other.
Okay, no, I think that's a good point.
Just to toss that out there for having trouble finding community members, perhaps go to one of the the towns. And look for you know, the an officer or someone out of the highway department, or, you know, any anyone across the towns.
Okay.
All right, anything else on goals and development opportunities? All right, moving on to old business, we have the Spalding Memorial School lease agreement superintendent.
So I do not have an update on that as of yet, I did reach out to the to the town manager in early July and also the end of last week, I I did request that potentially he look at putting together a team of people that that can meet with us, a representative group from North Middlesex Regional School District as well to discuss some of the issues that we're having with finalizing the lease. So an email was sent on the fifth of July, another one was sent on the twenty-fifth, and actually, so it was Monday. Just waiting to hear back, it's very likely that he's on vacation or something along those lines, or hasn't been able to put together a team because of vacations. But I'm hopeful to hear at some point soon, and if I don't, I'll reach out again, because I do think we have to sit down as a group and try to work out some of the differences.
And does that include perhaps based towns in Ashby Youth Baseball Softball? Or is it not just that?
I I'm not sure if it's going to include them or not, because I feel like that situation has been has been addressed. I think there are there are just other issues with the lease and building use, I I think is really the big one that we're going to have to address and discuss. So I'm just waiting to hear back from Mr. Slager, once I hear back from him, I'll let the committee know, and then we can establish a team as well to meet with them.
Jess, I don't know if you feel comfortable knocking on his door, but
I was just going to say, he almost never emails back, you have to call him, you have to physically go down there, you have to
Okay.
You have to be proactive about it, that's just been my experience working with him.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Is that lease, the current lease expired, or is this?
Nancy's on the call, I believe the current lease is expired.
It is expired.
So it's just, it's just more or less, you know, right now, we're continuing on as as is, but you know, there are still issues with regard to how they would like the building to be used, when in reality, we still have to get the building cleaned. We have to get ready to be open, and that entails waxing, stripping waxing, allowing the floors to dry, removal of furniture. So it's it's not an issue unless we end up having to potentially add another week on to the rec program. Then it becomes an issue, so right now, we've moved the rec program for its last week to Hawthorne Brook, because that building will be done. And then it will allow Spalding to finish up the areas the Townsend Rec was using for the summer months, or for the summer weeks, I should say. To prepare for the opening of school on the fourteenth, when teachers are allowed to come back into the buildings for the first time. We basically don't allow staff in the district so that the custodial staff can get the buildings done in between, you know, making sure Townsend Rec has what it's need, what it needs, but also the extended school year programs have what it needs as well. And we we still don't have a full custodial and maintenance staff. So it's a challenge.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we said this before, I I think building use is different than the lease, and I think those two need to remain separate, and he can provide another lease where a landlord leases out a facility and allows for the landlord to use the facility for nothing, I I'd love to see a lease like that, I've not been able to find one. So good luck, and we'll look forward to an update.
Thank you.
Moving on to subcommittee reports, Lisa, how many accelerated repair updates?
No update.
June, the Ashby Building Committee, how are things going there?
We're finally starting to make some progress on some of the the tasks that we identified as initial things such as like boarding up the old wing, things like that, it's not boarded up yet, but we have quotes now finally, so Dave Amari is working very, very hard and doing a lot, so I'm trying not to micromanage any of that. Because he has a lot on his plate, and Ashby is just, you know, one of of some of the schools that he's managing, so but we are making progress, we're also hoping to take advantage of a green energy grant opportunity this fall. So anyhow, our next meeting is August eighth.
Excellent. Do we have updates on the the money that was set aside by Ashby, is that, has any of that been spent, and do we have updates? If so, we have updates on how much progress we've made?
It hasn't really been spent, because we were waiting for quotes on a couple of the big things first. That we really need to to get these big, bigger issues nailed down, and then we'll be able to kind of filter down from there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have Tom on, I don't think we have an update on the communication side, finance, Lisa?
No update.
Negotiation personnel, Lisa? And Dave? Nothing from either?
We have nothing from the unions.
All right, policy, Randy?
No update at this time, I need to get a meeting together. Schedules have been a little bit tough over the summer, but we'll get get going.
No worries. And then any updates from our liaisons, Ashby, Purple Towns, and June, Dave, Jess?
No updates for me.
All right. Our next item is an executive session, and before we read the daunting paragraph, do we need to come back to open session after, do we anticipate? I just want to make sure we don't.
I wasn't sure, so I just added it.
Yeah, no, I'd rather have the option, right? I just don't Yeah, I don't think there's anything we're gonna have to come back here to vote on, so. All right. So if somebody wants to make the motion for executive session? That would be appreciated.
I move that Randy makes a motion.
I'll suck him up.
Okay, well, I do have it up, so I move that the school committee meets in executive session pursuant to M G L chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, for the following purpose. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools. And purpose seven, to comply with and act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Executive session minutes dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, dated June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, and dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Right.
If you hear correctly, if the committee will not, well, that'd probably be yours anyway.
That's good. Thank you, Dave, all right, so this is to enter executive session, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yes.
With M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the committee will now be meeting in executive session pursuant to M G L chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Executive session minutes dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, and July nineteen, twenty twenty-three. The committee will not be reconvening in open session, so we will be adjourning open session and carry out the rest of our business in executive session. So thank you to our one public attendee this evening, and we'll see the rest of you in executive session.